And what are they building toward? It was really great and I appreciate teachers taking the time to inform us about that. That's how we learn more about the organization. And likewise, I want to give a shout out to our Learning Services team and all of our instructional administrators. I had an opportunity to be part of a large gathering of our administrators, instructional administrators from across the district last week. And I have to say, the level of conversation and embedded training that is going on around, and this particular one that I got to experience was around Common Core Science and what that really looks like. We got led through it by one of our experts, teacher leaders, who really helped us understand it from a student perspective, what's different about teaching science this way than teaching science in the way that we would have done it years ago. And got a real good sense of that comparison. But the dialogue around the room, enthusiasm for where we're going, was really, really great. And it was just, I walked out of there thinking, yes, this is productive, this is great learning and great growth and great program improvement. And it takes a lot of people leading it. I also noticed it wasn't just one person up there doing it. There was every member of the team taking a portion of it. And that's what was intended for our goals this year, and that's what's continuing to happen. And hats off to everybody who was part of that. Lastly, I want to mention, you're going to have a long data presentation tonight. It's a very long one. Typically when we do our data, you know, there's a lot that comes at you, and sometimes we just do the what. You know, here's what the results are. Tonight, we're going to try to give you a little more dialogue about some of the wonderings, some of the look under the hood, some things. It will not, you could spend four hours and still not get to all the detail that, you know, some people might like to get to, but it's a start. We're starting with this cycle and we'll keep working through it. I'm really excited about it. And I want you to know that our data dashboard that is on the website is completely refreshed, completely updated. And I think that may be noted in the presentation tonight, but I want to make sure in case it gets buried in all the information, that everybody knows if you go to our website, you can just type in in the search box "data dashboard," you'll be able to get a really nice, refreshed data dashboard. If you go to our strategic, if you type in "strategic plan" and you look at our last iteration of the strategic plan, that would be the 1718 strategic plan, you'll also get just a few pages of summary of the goal items we're working on, and the key performance indicators, the KPIs we've been tracking on those. I want people to understand that we hold ourselves accountable and we make those things available to people. We want people to see the results, and we go the extra mile to make that happen. It's not always perfectly updated, or we have a lot of things going on, and sometimes, like someone brought to our attention a week or so, go, hey, that data's old. We're like, okay, we'll fix it. And we did. I want you to go there and see it, and know that we're committed to this work. I think I'm very proud of what's there. I'm very proud of what's there. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Blog.
Oh, yes, there's a blog post along this line. Thank you, I glossed over that. If you go on our website, on the homepage, I think this is also very appropriate, given the conversation that we're going to be having around data tonight, that I have a blog now that it's, I'm on my third post. This most recent post that was released today really deals with this issue of standardized testing, and how that, how we view it, what we do with it, what it's informed for us, and just some thinking about how we assess our students and assess the quality of our programs. So I hope you'll have the time to go there. If you just go right to the front page, you'll see "A Look Forward," is the name of the blog. Go on that, you can see all the posts, but the most recent one is on that. The post before is on safety and security, if you're interested in that. And the first post down there was about my experience at the school farm, which was quite transformational, I have to say, the Bauer School Farm. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yes, Farmer Rob was the feature for the current month's issue of Bloomfield Living. There's a wonderful picture of Farmer Rob and Cynthia and their garden plot. It's a great story.
Yeah, right here. And a great article page before.
On robotics.
On robotics. On our robotics team. Bloomfield Living, if you're interested.
Thank you very much, Rob. All right, so next on our agenda this evening, we have a special recognition, and I'd like to invite up Mr. Steve Levine from GLP Investment Services, who wants to make some presentation for Dr. Glass.
Thank you. I have to start off by saying, this is the first time in about 50-plus years that I've said the Pledge of Allegiance. It brings me back to my elementary school days, and I remembered all the words. I'll have to tell my wife about that.
So we need you to be, so that the cameras may look at you.
Oh, face, okay.
Face us, because that's where the cameras are going to get your voice.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to represent GLP and Associates in tonight's award presentation to Dr. Glass. For those of you who are not familiar with GLP and Associates, we are today the largest provider of 403B, 457 retirement saving programs in the state of Michigan. We were founded in 1969 by Gerald L. Pollak, hence GLP, with the specific intent of serving public school educators. That is our primary focus and has been for years. GLP not only works directly with Bloomfield Hills employees, but we are also the district's third-party administration company, so we have a broader relationship with the district. I'm particularly grateful to be here. It was almost a last-minute thing, but I'm grateful to be here because I've been working with your employees for the past 20 years in retirement planning and investments, so it's great to be here. GLP, very importantly, as part of its culture, has always looked for ways to give back to the community in support of public education. Over the years, we have tried to help districts and student families in need. For example, our Thanksgiving holiday turkey giveaway to needy families throughout the state of Michigan is something we do every year. We've helped districts in fundraising activities, book drives. We've even participated in neighborhood cleanup efforts, you know, from time to time. Whenever a GLP agent walks into management with a request, I have to say that GLP is very attentive and very receptive and tries to accommodate those requests as much as possible. What brings me here today is another way that GLP gives back to the community, which is the funding of scholarship awards to deserving students through a scholarship foundation started by GLP many years ago. Tonight's award of $5,000 goes to the Superintendent of the Year, chosen at GLP's annual golf outing, and the proceeds are used for the district's funding of scholarships. So I'd like to present the award to Dr. Glass, and I'll read the plaque. It says, "Bloomfield Hills Schools 2017 Superintendent Appreciation Day for your commitment, vision, and dedication to public education in Michigan. 24th Annual GLP and Associates Scholarship Award, Dr. Robert J. Glass."
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We are so appreciative, I'm so appreciative of GLP and your commitment to our students and to the profession, to our educators. And this is a very kind and thoughtful gesture on your part, and we'll make sure that this goes to a very great needy cause within our student body. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Thank you so much to GLP partners. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda, we have the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence Award for the 2016-17 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Tina.
Good evening. I am very, very pleased to be here again to share that we, the district, received the Association of School Business Officials Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for having met or exceeded the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. The district was recognized for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending 2017. It takes about a year, sometimes a little bit less, to hear whether or not we received this award, and this is our 18th consecutive year.
Wow.
This award represents a very significant achievement and reflects our commitment to the highest standards of school system financial reporting. It takes hard work and dedication from many, many Bloomfield Hills School staff to compile the CAFR, as we refer to it, in accordance with ASBO's strict reporting standards. But it primarily involves the finance team members, and some of them are here with us tonight. And I acknowledge everyone's efforts. If you would just stand and wave, please. So thank you to all who have contributed, and thank you especially to Karen and Arel for leading this successful effort with the finance team, as well as many, many staff who contributed. Everyone's tremendous efforts year-round contribute to receiving this award, and we have a plaque this year. And as we figure out everything we're doing in this building that has had many changes, I think some of these plaques will be displayed in the halls. That's it. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations. Thank you for, thank you to all of you. Appreciate all of your hard work. And, you know, we're having our presentation from our auditors this evening, and I'm sure they will attest to the professionalism of our team, and we all really appreciate it. I know it's a tremendous effort that you all put in, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on into our consent agenda. Jackie, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes: regular meeting of October 11, 2018. Request to approve technology design RFP recommendation. Request to approve participation with Oakland Schools for grant purchase Practical Assessment Exploration System, which provides special education students a practical assessment exploration system, a hands-on program that includes career and life skills training for a cost of $25,672. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve disbursement reports. Request to approve the annual tax resolution. Request to approve the purchase of two vehicles. One, 2020 M2 106 Freight Liner Salt Truck from Hoekstra Equipment in the amount of Winter is coming. And one, 2018 Ram 550 Work Truck in the amount of $77,929.42, to come from the Capital Equipment Fund. And request to approve HR actions.
Do I have support? Support from Mr. Bank. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have our annual report from our auditors, from Plant Moran, and we have Laura Clayes and Joshua Veith, who are going to present to us tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you for introducing them. Every year, I just want to say briefly that we are required by law to have an independent audit of our basic financial statements. We did meet with FFLA and covered the statements in greater detail. And without further ado, Laura and Josh will present the highlights.
How do we switch it over? I told you I would help you, and I forgot.
Go to Slide 1. We could start with the last slide, but we'll start with the first slide. Here we go.
Okay. Good evening. We're very pleased to be here this evening to present the results of the June 30, 2018 audit report. You did receive in your board packet a copy of the June 30, 2018 Basic Financial Statement or Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, as was referenced earlier. A single audit report, as well as a letter to the Board of Education, was just some informational items for your consideration. As was mentioned, we did meet with the FFLA committee, and we went through the financial report in detail. We're going to just go through the graphical highlights for you this evening. Before I begin, though, just a reminder, we did complete our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and as a result of those procedures, we rendered an unmodified or a clean opinion. So as the board and as community members, that's the highest form of assurance you can receive from an outside auditing firm, and it means that we're not aware of any changes that need to be made to those financial statements in order for them to be issued in accordance with the accounting principles. I would like to congratulate you again on the receipt of that ASBO Certificate of Excellence for the 18th straight year. As you're aware, your financial reports include a lot more information than other financial reports that you might see from other school districts. And I think that really highlights the transparency that you have with the community. It certainly helps you when you're in the community and you may have a bond issue or things along those lines, because you have a lot of historical information that's there that doesn't have to be gathered at some point in the future. So congratulations again to all of you, and certainly to the finance team on that achievement. In addition to the audit that we did for the basic financial statements, we did also perform an audit of your federal programs. And based on the auditing that we did there, we have no findings and no question costs. And as a community member or a board member, that's what you're looking for, and that means that you're running your programs in adherence with those federal regulations, which, as you're well aware, get more and more rigid each and every year. So with that, we will turn your attention to the screen, and we'll cover some of the financial highlights for the general fund for the year.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here again tonight. We'll start on the first slide and talk about the general fund revenue and other sources. Total revenue for the year was $91.1 million compared to $88.5 in the prior year, and that is primarily made up of state, local, federal, and inter-district revenue. The state revenue is the largest source, which represents the state portion of the foundation allowance, which is your per pupil funding, as well as other categoricals. And state revenue was $44.9 million, or 49.2% this year. And as we've talked in the past, included within that state revenue is funding that comes from the state to the district and then is immediately paid to the retirement system. This year, that was $7.4 million, and within that amount, there was a $1.2 million one-time payment this year that will not continue going forward. And then local revenue was $39.4 million. That's primarily property taxes. Federal revenue is primarily special education funding, and the inter-district revenue is distributions from Oakland Schools for Act 18. On the next slide, we look at the general fund expenditures and other uses. We're looking at it by function, and if you, you can see that the biggest component there is instruction and instructional support of $64.7 million, which really, you know, that is expected, and it's pretty comparable to the prior year. Last year, that was 70.4%. And if you were to look at the other functions as a percentage of how those funds were spent, those percentages are very consistent with how they were spent in the prior year. Again, this chart is looking at general fund expenditures, but this time by object, which is how were the funds spent? And you can see the majority of funds were spent on salaries and benefits. They made up 83.9% this year, and last year, that was 83.8%, which is expected as the district is a service organization. The most significant costs are going to be your people costs. And then a reminder that within the employee benefits amount, so that $30.6 million, the funding that we talked about coming from the state and then being passed through to the retirement system, that is included within that employee benefit. So there is that $7.4 million that comes in as revenue, but then directly goes out. Again, percentages by object and how those funds were spent is very comparable to last On the next slide, we take a, we look at the analysis of the general fund balance, and what we're going to do is go from beginning of your fund balance to how we got to the end of your fund balance. So we started the year at $20.8 million, had revenue and other financing sources of $91.1 million, expenditures and other financing uses of $91.5, and that resulted in a decrease of fund balance of 3.8, resulting in ending fund balance of 20.4. And if you think back to the final budget that was adopted in June, you had a budgeted use of fund balance of 1.2 million. So you guys actually came in a little bit better than expected. And then if you look at the fund balance, well, actually, we'll go to that at the bottom. Moving down to the second, second part of this chart is the components of fund balance. And the first component is non-spendable. That's $111,000. That represents funds that have already gone out, but the resources or you'll be receiving the benefits in the upcoming year. So that would be things that were prepaid but relate to 2018, 2019. And then assigned fund balance of $881,000. That is part of your first budget that you adopted for 2018, 2019. That's the amount that you plan to use in the upcoming school year. And then moving down, $19.4 million is the unassigned fund balance, and that represents approximately 22.6% of expenditures. And then the unassigned fund balance, if you think about it in terms of operations, it represents about 11 weeks of operations. And with the assigned fund balance, one other thing to note is, we know that you guys adopt that based on your best estimates, so that is something that will likely change throughout the year.
This slide right here is something that we've talked about in the past, and it's really a historical look at the retirement expense. So as Josh mentioned, you do have some revenues that come from the state. You have to turn right around and pay those back to the state, but certainly there is quite an expenditure that comes from the district resources relative to contributions to the retirement system. So what you can see here is the trend over time has been that that retirement cost has increased year over year, and that's a system that you're required to participate in, but you really don't have any decision-making authority over it. You can't decide how the funds are invested, and you certainly cannot opt out of it either. So it's really just important to know how the resources are being allocated from the district's perspective. So on the far-right column, you can see for the year ended June 30, 2018, the gross amount of the retirement contribution was $21.1 million. And then that net amount of $13.8 million, that's really net of that $7.4 million pass-through that's coming from the state. So you are still using approximately $14 million worth of district resources for contributions to the retirement system, because it's a percentage of every dollar spent. So that's a number that we watch very closely with our school district clients. We certainly watch what's happening at the state level, and you can see it is somewhat tapering out a little bit, but we think it'll be at that 25, 26% level for quite some time, because there are more retirements coming out of the system than certainly contributions going in at this moment in time.
Laura, so some of the money, the $13 million or $14 billion, a million hits us directly. The 21, the additional 8 million is coming in and going out. Is there not additional money that comes right off the top before it ever hits the foundation allowance, going out of the state coffers?
Yes, so the state is making certain contributions, and that happened over a period of time. It's called a UAAAL amount, but what they're doing in order to evidence their contribution to the system is they are passing it through to the district. So the money is all coming to the districts and then going into the system.
So none of the money is just going right off the top?
No, it used to be that way in the past, but no longer.
Okay, so the total amount that both Bloomfield is responsible for and is coming through out of the state coffers is the $21 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just your district piece, as well as, and then everyone else has the same issue going on in their, in their communities.
Got it.
So really, just from a closing perspective, we want to congratulate you on the way in which you run the district, the decision-making processes that you undertake. You are a well-run district. You're organizationally sound. When we come out here to do our audit, we're checking the controls that you have in place, how you monitor funds, how you approve transactions, and you really are top-notch in that regard. And we thank you for that, and we think it is, you're being good stewards of the public's money. We also appreciate the fact that when you look at the investments that you're making and how the dollars are spent, you are taking a longer-term view. You want the district to be here for the long term. You want to continue to provide exceptional programs for students today and in the future. And that means you need to look further out than just what's going to happen in the next 12 months. So we want to make sure that the community is well-aware of that process that you undertake and the work that we're doing to kind of review that along the way. And as was mentioned earlier, when you have these excellent results, it is a collaboration amongst all the departments within the district, the community support that you receive, and certainly all of the employees that are here as well. And they should be acknowledged, even though they might not be people that we interact with in the finance department. And then just a word of caution, I guess, and a recommendation is, when we don't know what's going to happen with school finance, just continuing to monitor that, continuing to be fiscally conservative as best you can while providing exceptional programs will really be important. We will have a change in leadership coming, obviously, from the state perspective soon. We're not quite sure what that will mean for state school funding, but we'll continue to monitor that. I know your team will as well. But we just want to congratulate you on a job well-done for the year ended June of 2018, and thanks for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you so much, Laura. Any questions from the board? I know folks at our FFLA committee did a much deeper dive into all of this data with them earlier. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a report coming on our M-Step and our SAT results from our Learning Services team.
And while the Learning Services team is setting up, I just want to, again, reiterate, this is going to be a more comprehensive report than what you've typically had. It may generate a lot of questions for you, and what I would ask is, just so that we don't have the report go any longer than necessary, when you get a question, I would, I would ask if it's at all possible that you jot it down and catalog any of those questions so we can answer them maybe at the end. I don't think we have to be too absolute with that, but it would be a good practice if, if you could, because I think you probably will have some really great wonderings and questions. And enjoy.
Thank you, Rob. All right, you've got Todd, and Wendy, and Christine.
We lost our mouse.
It's the back. There you go. Well, good evening. Learning Services is excited to present to you this evening quite an in-depth view of some of our state assessment data. And what we're going to be doing is not only reviewing some of those data components, as Rob explained, but also taking the opportunity to embed some information of how we're trying to build capacity around fostering a data culture, as well as models of collective efficacy, and how all of that dynamic is starting to really develop for us at those building locations. So we'll try to interweave a few of those components while making sure that we have the opportunity to take a deep dive into some of this high-level data. And to kind of really get us started, it's going to be Wendy Osterman and Christine DiPolato going through quite a bit of information for you this evening. So like Rob mentioned, we're going to try to hold questions to the end, just to make sure that we get all the way through the presentation.
We lost our mouse again, so.
Oh, and we, okay.
Stop.
I'll work on that.
Talk why. Talk a little bit more, guys. So right now, we're seeing two different screens. So what you're seeing isn't what we're seeing.
I hear Vicky running. I thought it was Vicky running. It's Christine running.
Can you go right off of that, though?
No.
Chrome, present.
Yep, did all that. Did it.
Extend.
Did it. And then move. Try this. Try doing this again.
Can you just go off that instead of presentation mode like that? No?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to try this.
Close it out and open it again.
It's on extend.
We open it.
Moved it. It is.
While they're doing that, I will thank our tonight's crew, who are bringing us to the community. That would be Dave Collins, Josh Balin, Shannon Stringer, and Vicky Chandler. So thank you to, here's Vicky trying to help us get this up and going, but thank you to our students who are helping to bring us to the community.
And I guess while we're working, I do have another announcement, I guess. Last week, I think it was on Wednesday, our marching band performed in the Fall Festival and got straight ones, straight A's, the highest level that they can get in their final performance at Fall Festival. So congratulations to our marching band.
Thank you, Paul. That's great news. Are we there yet?
Hang on. No, we're working on it. That's 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 it.
Let me get my mouse back. Give me a minute here. Okay. No, you guys are fine. Okay. And then, yep, and then are you having your notes view? Okay. And then we're going to minimize that real quick. We're going to go back to the function, and let's hopefully this works. It worked when we practiced, didn't it?
It did. We practiced it three times.
Okay.
You tested it three times.
And this goes up and over. It's taking, is it taking your notes? It took it? And it took your notes with it? It really did do present, well, they did swap out laptops this week, too, so.
Oh, I can, I can use them off here.
At least this way you can get control.
If that's going to take any longer, possibly we could do public comment now?
They might want to do it after. Just a minute.
Okay.
How many slides do you have? You got to get back out of present mode. Okay. There you go. There's your presentation. Okay.
No, I'll go off my own.
Okay.
I think that might be better. We'll make some adjustments. Technology doesn't always work, right? Luckily, there's good old paper. So that will work. So good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's this time of year again, right? So we're excited because not only are, we, we were asked to share the state testing data like we always are, but we were asked to also share some things with our data culture, assessment literacy, and the how part. So that's really exciting. So in, can you guys hear me okay? So in 2018, the biggest changes with M-Step really related to shortening the tests. And, and that science was a field test. So you will not see data for science, and that will probably continue for 2019 data as well. And just so you know, we don't have data for it either. The state doesn't have any data for science, being that it was in field test year. So the major changes were in ELA, a removal of the performance tasks at grades five and eight, and the removal of short constructed response items at grades three, four, six, and seven. So this reduced the time. And if you look at the chart that's on the left, you can see that, in the main part of the chart at the very bottom, it tells you the total hours, estimated average total hours, and then underneath it has the previous year. So you can see, for instance, with grade five, there was a huge reduction in the amount of time that students were testing. In math, there was a removal of performance tasks at all grades. Now, just, yes. Did you have a question?
No, I just had one performance test. Sorry, I should have written that down.
A removal of the performance test at all grades for math. So as a heads-up for this year, for spring 2019, the big major change that's coming our way is that in eighth grade, the M-Step for ELA and mathematics will be replaced by the PSAT eight-nine, which is the same task that our ninth graders have been taking. M-Step, science, and social studies will continue. This is, this is a big change. This is a big shift for us, and the test coordinators and the building administrators are doing a lot right now. I started sharing information with them as soon as it became available. And I'll be meeting with them regularly throughout the year so that there's a very smooth transition. We're all going to a training, all of the middle schools represented, and myself, coming up, I think, November 9th. And, and it'll be a lot of, a lot of changes on the backend so that our students don't necessarily feel those changes. So we're going to start with M-Step proficiency levels, looking at state and county comparisons as well as trends with the data. And I have to note that the Michigan Department of Education made recent announcements of a statistical issue with eighth-grade math. So we have some preliminary data, and the preliminary data does show a slight increase in our scores for Bloomfield Hills schools. Nothing major, but I wanted to make sure that you know that the proficiency levels in this presentation do not reflect that because we don't have official information yet. The Michigan Department of Education has shared that they will give us that information by November 2nd to parents and everyone that it impacts alike. And that Michigan Department of Education Dynamic site, that is a site that we use, that's not a public site, so we'll be the first ones to see that by November 2nd, so coming up soon. But like I said, we don't anticipate anything major. We are anticipating some slight increases, maybe a percent, percent and a half increase, depending on the school. So the proficiency levels for all grades, ELA, math, and social studies is on this slide. And what you're seeing here is that Bloomfield Hills schools is in blue, and the county is in red, and the state is in green for the proficiency levels. The proficiency level percent average is at the top of each bar. As with previous years, we continue to be above county and state proficiency levels in all subjects and all grades tested. This next slide shows district trends for four years with grades combined. Although when we're looking at district trends, it is important to remember that the test has changed every single year. So we have to maybe think of that in the back of our minds as we're looking at trends. Again, BHS proficiency levels are blue, county is red, and the state is green. And again, we continue to be above county and state proficiency levels in all grades and subjects tested. Because the tests change each year, it may be helpful to also look at trends for the county and/or state to see what's happening there as well. And the next slide will combine the trend data with the grade-level data, but it will not have every single number that you've seen on the previous two slides. It gets a little busy. But I did want to point out one thing. If you look at the state and county trend, there was a decrease in ELA. However, Bloomfield Hills schools did show an increase. Christine will talk a little bit about this later. The opposite is true in math, which actually is what we expected, and social studies seem to follow a similar trend to the state and county. So here's a slide that combines all of that data. So it's a little bit busy. That's why the numbers for every single bar graph and triangle and box are not listed there. But this basically is going to combine those previous two slides with, what you're looking at here is that Bloomfield Hills schools is represented by the blue bars, and the yellow triangles represent Oakland County, and the red boxes represent the state of Michigan. So you can start to see some of the trends there. Again, keep in mind that the group of students in actual tests do change every year, so sometimes it's helpful to look at the same cohort. Some of the biggest positive differences are with eighth-grade ELA and math. Happens to be eighth grade with both of those. And just so you know, school-level data is shared with the buildings. I met with the administrator of the building and a data team, and we looked at similar data for each building. You can't really look at that here because sometimes there's only one teacher that would teach a specific subject, like math, for instance. But we started to dig a little bit deeper into that and really, really analyze it and try to look for trends that are happening. A lot of great conversations came out of those conversations. The next slide shows district rankings for ELA. And what you're seeing here are all of the districts that are in Oakland County. The oval is all of Oakland County averaged. So you can see that at the bottom, that oval. And then I've boxed in Bloomfield Hills. It also has some trend data in there. So the line that goes across, the trend line, is going to be the seventeen, eighteen. And then it also shows the sixteen, seventeen in yellow and the fifteen, sixteen in red. So looking at this, BHS is tied in fifth with Novi at sixty-eight percent. Troy has the greatest percent proficiency at seventy-three percent. And you will notice that the, I just want to make sure I'm on the right one. You will notice that the top six county districts are within five percent of each other, and then we see kind of a sudden drop of seven percent to a sixty-one percent. So you can see there's a nice little cluster there of the top school districts. We're looking at something similar with this next slide, only here we're looking at math. BHS is ranked fourth in the county at sixty-four percent proficiency math, and the highest in the county is at seventy-six percent, and that would be Novi. I did want to point out a point of pride with eighth grade. So eighth-grade ELA, which was not impacted by the statistical issue, because this is eighth-grade ELA, not math, is the highest in the county at seventy-one point four percent proficiency. And I think it's important that when we look at our strengths and we look a little bit deeper at this data, that that will really support building our collective efficacy. So having conversations around what we're seeing that's really having some positive impacts, then hopefully we can keep growing those. That was some of the information that was shared when I met with the principals and their data groups.
Could you just go, sorry, could you just go back, back one?
One more?
Yeah, I just want to see something. I want to ask you a question. I just want to look at it.
Okay.
Okay, one more. I just want to see it.
Is that circle in the wrong place? You've got the circle in.
Possibly, yes, it is. Yeah, it went over a little bit. Shouldn't be on here and there. Thank you, Howard.
I just wanted to see something. Seems like we're clustered. Every year, we're pretty precise. And we're hitting very similar target.
Especially when you're looking at that slide in ELA.
We don't have a spread. Yeah. Okay. That's what I wanted to see.
Talking about such a small range between.
Yeah, but we're pretty much hitting the same mark every time, so we're pretty precise.
We are.
Consistent.
Yes.
And engineering is precise. Thank you.
Yes. So the next slide is something kind of new that we have been kind of playing around with, and it has some comparison data based on M-Step. And we're really just trying to use this model to help us with continuous improvement. And looking at this model, it kind of tells our story because we really were focusing in on some major redistricting in the district and the culture to support some of that redistricting for many years. And now what we're trying to do is really aim to have goals that are related to our Core One instruction, which Christine will go into more depth a little, a little bit later in the presentation. And as you know, last year, we had a pilot year with our K through five math, so we wouldn't expect to see anything major because we knew that we needed to focus in on our Core One instruction with math. But in ELA, we started to make some changes, and we're actually seeing a positive impact, positive data that supports that we're headed in the right direction. So that M-Step for ELA, you can see that we kind of widened the gap a little bit, and then we're starting to narrow it in. So hopefully, as we continue to make these changes and really strengthen up our core instruction and work with our teacher leaders, that we will see that gap close, and then we can be above. So the orange can be above. So we just took five districts to try to be consistent there.
Close Oakland County districts or state one?
Oakland County.
Thank you.
Yeah. But it's, it's nice to see that the data is supporting what we are doing.
We only have one pet.
I think we're taking cost savings a little too far.
Yeah.
Times are tough.
Yeah. So the next few slides will focus on student groups, and we make an assumption that all students can be proficient. And we make instructional decisions to meet the students at their level, but aiming for that one-hundred percent proficiency.
Can, can we just take a one break to ask questions about this before we go into the segments? Okay, I just have one question. Go back one. Okay, so when we look at this, I know we, we've been working on our, our literacy on the BSE, and also, though, we've been, we worked on our math in order to then change our, you know, we selected the new curriculum. So remind me, did we just roll that out?
Yes, so that started this year. So it's being rolled out this year in grades K through five.
And before that, we were piloting everything. So this is when we were piloting.
Correct.
Yeah, so I would expect this to happen.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's all I want to say. Go.
Okay, thank you.
For us, just a quick question. What are the five schools, and how are they determined? When you say five top schools?
Do you want to share that?
You may. You just took the top five.
Yes, we just tried to take the top five, if I can remember off the top of my head. Rochester.
You mentioned in the listing, so the same ones they mentioned in the listing.
Yeah.
In each case.
Yes, both. So we wanted some consistency there. So it was Rochester, Novi, Birmingham, Lake Orion, and Troy. Thank you.
The ones that were listed in the previous slides. Yeah.
Okay. So with all student groups, we know that our core instruction must be solid first, and we are taking steps to ensure this. And again, more details will be shared with, by Christine. Sorry, I keep mentioning your name.
Sorry. Building up.
Building up. So with this slide, what we're looking at are district and county proficiencies by student group for English Language Arts. And Bloomfield Hills schools is in blue, and county is in red. And I want to explain that a little bit more. So as a reference, our proficiency levels for all students was a sixty-eight percent compared to the county fifty-five percent. And that would be on the far left. So on the far left, you see all. With the other student groups, a student is in either one category or the other category. So if you look at each one of those, every single student is going to be represented, so either male or female, economically disadvantaged, not economically disadvantaged, just to give you a little bit better understanding of what you're looking at. For each set, all, sorry, Bloomfield Hills schools is above county levels in all subgroups, which actually wasn't the case in previous years. So that's, that's a step in the right direction. Looks like you guys are all looking, so I don't want to switch slides.
These populations are all statistically significant so that we have a large enough population for each one of these to be reported out.
Correct. Yes, and to look at the number that is in each population, if you look just above, for instance, where it says all two thousand four hundred eighteen, so right above the category, is going to have the number that's in each category.
Got it.
Yeah, right there. The lowest is the Hispanic at eighty-one.
Correct.
Students.
The Hispanic is interesting whereby, in the county, it's fifteen percent difference, and for us, it's only four percent.
Good observation.
Yeah, strong students. Also, this is, well, it's forty, thirty, sixty to twenty.
Wendy, I don't know if it's the next slide or we have it. Do we have it comparing to the five, to the five, our to- the top five and broken out like this?
No, we do not. So the next slide has multi-year trends for ELA by student group. So the green is two thousand seventeen and the purple is two thousand and eighteen. And we are fairly consistent, showing increases in many subgroups except special education and African-American populations, where we show slight decreases within two percent. Statistically, I don't know how significant that would be, but we did show slight decrease. However, when we look at our Fanta's and Pennell data, which is going to be coming up in a few slides, we see some promise with our African-American population. Fanta's and Pennell data is grades K through five. And what we're seeing is that when we look at our African-American population, they're showing greater gains than when we look at all students, which would mean achievement gaps starting to close. So if everyone is gaining, they're gaining just a little bit quicker than everybody. Fanta's and Pennell data is grades K through five, and this data is grades three through eight. So what we would expect by that is that within a few years, we should start seeing that same representation within our M-STOP scores.
Do we see correlation with the overlap between those two? So you've got K five, so it's grades three, four, five, is also in this.
Correct.
So do we see correlation between the Fanta's and Pennell in this data?
So we see some correlation, but when we're talking about reading, we see the most growth with reading in the lower grades, especially first grade. So K one, two. And then when we get to third grade and beyond, we don't see as much growth with reading.
Is, if you're saying that, you know, the three, four, five seems to be more growth, is there a problem with six, seven, eight?
Fanta's and Pennell is K through five assessment.
No, I'm saying when you, when this is a combined three through eight, is what's bringing this down, six, seven, eight? If we're seeing growth in three, four, five?
Well, we also, we saw growth in every single grade with ELA this past year. With all students, but you're asking specifically with African-American population?
Yeah, or in general, we're saying the Fanta's. The new program is working with, you know, three, four, five. So if this is a combined three through eight, does that mean six, you know, like if I look at one number where we're like at sixty-eight percent, is it because three, four, five is bringing it up and six, seven, eight is bringing it down? Because this is combined.
No, we're not, right.
This is not broken, this is not broken out by grades, it's just combined three through eight. So I don't know, looking at this, i- if six, seven, eight is bringing it down and three, four, five is bringing it up or not.
So, so that would be, that would maybe be true if we saw a big difference, but we're only seeing a difference of two percent, which statistically isn't a huge difference. So we're not seeing, we're not seeing any one grade that's bringing it down. We actually saw that all grades improved in English Language Arts. However, one thing to kind of think about is that Fanta's and Pennell is a reading assessment, and this is, English Language Arts would be, which would be everything in English Language Arts.
I don't know, when I look at these numbers, though, it seems to be the same pattern, doesn't it? I mean, you're saying, you're telling me that it's, the African-American population is going down, but I see the same curve on every single one, sixty-eight, seventy, sixty-six. Sixty-six is the most recent one, right? Am I seeing this wrong? Sixty-eight, seventy, it goes sixty-eight, a little up to seventy-one, down to sixty-six. Asian, same, no, this is.
Yeah, it's white, yeah, the white goes from sixty-eight, seventy-one.
But what it, I thought this.
Two thousand seventeen is sixty-six, two thousand eighteen is sixty-seven.
Oh, this is two thousand eighteen, I thought it was the average.
Yeah.
Okay, because it doesn't say.
So the purple is the most current?
So my, so my question, if I, if I look at the, the last column, just white, sixty-seven percent, three through eight combined, so is it like sixty, you know, if I look at three through eight, sixty-six, sixty-eight, sixty-six, sixty, or is it like seventy, seventy-two, seventy-three, and then six, seven, eight is like sixty-one, sixty, and fifty-nine proficiency? And you combine it, it gets to sixty-seven?
So let me, let me go back.
Without, go, I'm just, I'm just saying high, high level. Is, is, is there a problem in six to eight?
No, there is not. Actually, eighth grade especially did wonderful this year. That was, that was our point of pride. So now we have district and county proficiency by student groups for math. Again, Bloomfield Hills is blue and County is red. And again, the student groups show all students within each category. And as a reference, our proficiency level for all students is sixty-five percent compared to the county at fifty percent. Bloomfield Hills Schools is above county levels in all subgroups except for English Language Learners, where we are about the same as the county level. So we saw a big increase in our English Language Learners with ELA, but consistency with math. And then we have the trend data for math by student group. Again, the green is two thousand seventeen and the purple is the two thousand and eighteen. And we are fairly consistent with all student groups within three percent for the past year, except our economically disadvantaged student groups and Hispanic student groups, which both showed an increase in the last year of four percent and six percent. Again, we're working on that math Core One instruction.
Are grades evenly, is this, is it the same concept? It's evenly distributed between the grades, like eighth grade is not lower than?
Right, eighth grade was actually the highest. And we're expecting those numbers to go up a little bit because of the statistical issue.
By showing, showing three through eight, we have it by individual grade, so if necessary, it could be exploded out by grade.
Not with every student group because of the numbers of students.
Okay, so that's where we get a population issue?
Correct.
For certain middle groups.
This also minimizes the changes from year to year, too.
Correct.
Because we're gathered, we're combining them.
Yeah, because then you only have one group entering, one group exiting.
You could look at longitude and data.
So then we have social studies. And again, the student groups show all students. And as a reference, our proficiency level for all students was forty-three percent compared to the county at thirty-three percent. And Bloomfield Hills Schools is above county levels in all of the subgroups. We do not have trend data because social studies is only given in two grades. And we don't have science because again, it was a field test year. So we're going to move on to PSAT and SAT, so really focusing in on our high school. And as a reminder, the SAT is part of the eleventh grade MME testing for accountability. I remember that last year, I was asked what the benchmark scores were that meant proficiency or college-ready, which means the same thing. And so I put a chart in there this year, because I definitely don't have those memorized. So I put a chart in there for your reference. I don't remember who asked, I just remember it was asked last year. So this graph combines PSAT and SAT, so similar to what we do for M-STOP. Combining several grades is going to give us a better overall picture. And PSAT and SAT is going to be then grades nine through eleven, with a few select seniors that did not have the opportunity or did not take it in their eleventh grade year. And this is for multiple years. So to look at the same group of students, you really have to go across the graph. So I put some arrows in to kind of help us out with that. And so, for example, the two thousand eighteen eleventh grade students had eighty-four percent in two thousand seventeen on the PSAT, and then a seventy-nine percent proficiency for ELA in two thousand eighteen, dropping five percent. The state trend also dropped five percent from a sixty-three percent to a fifty-eight percent in two thousand eighteen. The two thousand eighteen eleventh grade students had a proficiency of fifty-five percent in two thousand seventeen for PSAT and math, and a fifty-eight percent in two thousand eighteen on the SAT, gaining a three percent. The state trend actually dropped one percent, going from a thirty-eight to a thirty-seven. So if we look at that same cohort of students, in ELA, we followed the trend, and in math, we actually went in the other direction positively with the trend. Based on the total score on the SAT, Bloomfield Hills High School is in the top six percent of public high schools in Michigan, ranked number forty-six in Michigan compared to eight hundred and eighty-one other Michigan public high schools. And I just wanted to share that, because I know there was a newspaper article, and in case anyone hadn't seen it.
Do we, do we have this, and I know we, we don't have the M-STOP, do we have it compared to our top five schools, the SAT data?
Well, you're going to see on the next slide, all of the county, so you can compare it that way. So let's look at that. So this graph visually shows all of the counties, and it is ranked by ELA. So the top line, the blue line, is ELA, and the red line is math. Looks a lot more not like a line than the blue line. So this graph shows that for ELA, we are tied in second in the county with Troy at eighty-two point four percent, slightly above Rochester, who is actually at eighty-two point two percent. Novi has the greatest with eighty-four point eight percent. You can see that there, just like we saw with the M-STOP, we really do see a lot more clustering here. For math, we are ranked fourth in the county with Novi first at seventy-seven percent. There's a lot more variability with math.
Why would we, and I, I think I brought this up at BIC, why did we combine the PSAT and SAT as opposed to leaving, separating it or having the SAT by itself?
So we tried to combine it just to give a better overall picture, similarly to what we would do with M-STOP.
But the PSAT is, it's not a test that goes anywhere.
It's not used for accountability purposes.
It's not used for accountability for, for college, for college admissions. So why, I'm, I'm, I was confused then, I'm confused now, why we combined the scores?
So the good thing about PSAT and SAT actually compared to M-STOP is that with PSAT and SAT, we actually, as educators, can look at the questions and we can do a better job at analyzing that data. So the PSAT data is actually really beneficial for us, because we can get that data in time to actually act on it. Where with the SAT, by the time we get the data, we have seniors that sometimes, they've already applied to colleges, and we don't have them for a lot longer to actually act on the data. So we want to compare, you know, we want to catch anything as early as possible. So what's really kind of exciting is that with the PSAT being given to eighth graders starting this year, we're going to get, start to get that data earlier. And the plan is that we'll take that data when we get it in the fall and use it at the high school for the incoming ninth graders.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking, because I know my daughter just took the PSAT. She didn't, to be honest, she didn't, I mean, it's, again, it's a test. But, but that's, I mean, I just, I'm still confused as to why we combine it.
So it's the same type of structure, same type of questions, it's just that the difficulty isn't the same.
Paul, for reasons of.
We combined it, is it gives an accurate picture of a high school performance across ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, instead of just calling out one indicator of high school performance at eleventh grade? So similar to the combination of three through eight, which looks at different buildings and different levels, the PSAT/SAT combination gives us a more accurate picture of programming at the high school level.
For reasons that I'll get into when we get to the end, I think there's possibility that the PSAT scores may be more valid, or may have greater validity than the SAT scores. And I'll explain what I mean when we get to the end.
Is it because they can take SAT multiple times?
No, it, well, I'll wait.
Okay.
My comments are lengthy, but I think important, but I'll wait till the end.
Okay. So similar to the slides from STOP, we'll look at student groups for PSAT and SAT. So looking at ELA by the various student groups, Bloomfield Hills Schools is above county level proficiencies in all groups, and similarly in math. So we have some district points of pride based on the spring data that I wanted to bring to your attention. And one of the reasons why I want to bring these to our attention is not that we are trying to accentuate the positive, we know that there are things that we need to work on. You're going to hear that a lot throughout this presentation tonight. But we also know that by looking at the strengths of our district and concentrating on some of these positives and digging deeper and finding out what instructional moves led to that successful impact, we're going to build our collective efficacy. So in two thousand seventeen, the English Learner Student Group was our only group that had a proficiency level below the county average in ELA. This year, all student groups were above, and the English Learner Group jumped from twenty-nine percent to forty-three percent. And you have to keep in mind that you're talking about a difference of one grade. There was one grade coming in and one grade leaving. We wouldn't expect to see such a jump from that. Bloomfield Hills Schools is tied in second in the county for PSAT and SAT combined for English Language Arts. Bloomfield Hills Schools showed gains in ELA from two thousand seventeen to two thousand and eighteen for every grade tested, despite the state and county trends showing declines for the majority of grades. And we were ranked first in the county in M-STOP percent proficiency in eighth grade ELA. So we're going to transition a little bit from the state data that is of learning to data for learning. And this is, when we talk about data and we share this presentation with you, this presentation and M-STOP data really is going to be used more at a systems level. It's not going to be the data that's really going to drive our instruction and make huge differences within our classrooms. And so it's important to note that multiple measures are used throughout the year. And that although M-STOP is good for reporting, it's very limited in driving our instruction. What you see here tonight is pretty much what we get. We don't get things that we can dig a little bit deeper. Besides individual scores for students, that would be the only thing that we would see. It reminds me of if you're taking a driver's test and someone says you pass or you don't pass, you don't know what it is you need to work on. Or if you went to a doctor and they said, yep, your health is fine, you don't really know what all of the levels are, cholesterol, blood pressure. It's nice to know a little bit more. So the other measures give us that more information that we can really act upon. So this is going to be kind of a Cliff Notes version, because there's so much that we could talk about. We're talking about our Bloomfield Hills story and how we're building a data culture and growing our assessment literacy. And that's my, my passion, is growing a data culture and growing assessment literacy. So I could talk about this anytime you want, because I love it. So I will really try hard, again, to keep it kind of a Cliff Notes version. So some of the data that we would look at would be NWA data. And I know that people are pretty familiar with NWA data, because it's been used in the district for quite a while. So with NWA data, right here, we're looking at fall and spring. And for normal growth, what we would expect to see is basically the exact same thing, because the, it grows with the students. So it's a norm reference test, so it'd be norm reference for fall versus norm reference for spring. So you can see that the data supports maybe slightly more. So you can see that the data supports maybe slightly more than a normal growth. And this has reading, math, and language arts combined. Now, as teachers, we would look a little bit deeper at this data and we're able to do that. And we can look, uh, more at each standard that is being assessed. Now, Fanta's and Penel is our newer benchmark assessment and it's our reading assessment. And with Fanta's and Penel, the teachers are able to observe student reading behaviors one-on-one. And it gives us something, it gives us look fours basically, so that we know that we're hitting those benchmarks. So again, it grows with the students, the expectations grow. So for normal growth, what we would expect to see is something that looks the same. So what we do see though is that we are showing greater than expected growth here. And it's our first year with the test, so we kind of need to give it some time to actually gain a little bit more meaning of what that means. But we have some guesses that relate to our Core One instruction and really putting a focus and really making sure that we are supporting data digs and analyzing data and putting in interventions and supporting the needs of our students. So the next slide is again Fanta's and Penel data for various student groups. And we see greater than expected growth again with our African-American population, like I said earlier, actually showing even greater growth than the previous slide with all students. But looking at some of these student populations, African-American population, special ed, socioeconomic disadvantage, you'll see that we have that same consistency with all of the groups of showing greater than normal growth based on this assessment.
Do we, do we know why it doesn't translate specific, you know, um, into the MSEP data?
So again, this is K through five data and the SEP is three through eight. So some of the, so it could be that we might see it in a few years. And also this is only one part of MSEP, this is the reading, this would be reading. But it's exciting to see for sure.
So let me just make sure I understand because I don't think we've seen this kind of data before. So the, the spring data is more, the, the expectations are higher.
No, no, so, um, the, the expectations grow with the time of year.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so that if we saw, let's say socioeconomic going from twenty-nine percent, if it was still at twenty-nine percent, we would expect that because the expectations in the spring is higher than the expectations was in the fall.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Could you go back one slide?
And just one thing to point out, because if you start to add things up, you'll notice that in the fall, there are less students. And the reason why is because our incoming kindergartners are not ready to be assessed in reading. So we wait for our kindergarteners and they're represented in the spring. They take a different assessment that's, uh, more appropriate for them. So we still get data, just more appropriate.
But these, but this, um, data is an overall score. Cause I'm imagining Fanta's and Penel are, it's broken up into the building blocks that students need to have before they can become proficient, but this is an overall proficiency.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so, you know, Jackie's point, is exceeding expectations proficient? And, and Fanta's and Penel, that world?
It would be exceeding proficient expectations. So, um, if you look at needing, that would be what we would expect at grade level.
Meeting.
That's proficient, right.
So you could add the two and they would be.
Correct. Yeah, so if you were to add, if you were to add the top two, that would be, um, similar to proficient. And if you were to add the bottom two, that would be similar to not proficient. So illuminate is our data and information system. And implementation was in the later part of two thousand sixteen, seventeen, um, after, after I got this job actually. And we continue to use it more, adding data, which gives us a lot more data to explore. And what's, what's absolutely remarkable is the difference in questions that I am getting. So at first, which was great because I was learning to use illuminate as well, so I was able to keep up on the questions. They were asking more very basic questions about how do I log in? What icon do I click, things like that. And now, just as early as this fall, I am getting calls that are much more sophisticated. Teachers that are asking, how can I enter my own data? Because I want to have even more data to triangulate. Or how can I triangulate the data? Or what question should I be asking of myself and the teachers that I work with while we are looking at data? So this shows tremendous growth in such a short amount of time with our data culture and people feeling, uh, more welcome to share and explore and talk to one another. Um, and we have a long way to go still. We have to keep supporting and building this data culture. But these are some really big steps in the right direction. Because having this data in the hands of teachers, data that's important for them, that they can drive instruction, that's going to be powerful, that teacher-student level data. So illuminate has pre-built reports for NWA, Fanta's and Penel, um, MSEP. And they can be filtered by race, gender, special education, English learner, or any customized group. So teachers can really start analyzing their data. Teachers have access to district-created custom reports that can combine multiple points of data to look at. And this is what I'm seeing that they're doing more and more and more, which is new to them because we didn't have a tool in place that really easily allowed us to do this. This includes classroom assessments and it includes both quantitative and qualitative data that we are able to look at. Currently, there are almost nine hundred custom reports that have been created within illuminate in our district. And again, that's from about a year and a half's time. Most recently really from spring and beyond. Um, illuminate reports are used for individual teacher use or with groups of teachers to make instructional decisions. In addition to teacher reports, there are reports for administrators, students, parents, community. Uh, the Fanta's and Penel data actually came from illuminate. Assessments created, uh, by teachers in illuminate have immediate data summaries that include overall performance by mastery level and standard, lowest performing questions that would be attached to a common core state standard, student achievement gap analysis, and twenty-five pre-built reports. So as soon as that data gets entered, those are immediately there. Makes it a lot easier, we just need to some, we also have to grow into this a little bit because now we have all of this available and we need to practice and learn how to use it and become comfortable. But it's wonderful that we have this tool to help us and to support us because we don't have to spend a lot of time then gathering it. We can spend all of our time analyzing it and talking about instructional moves.
Wendy, it says that the reports are available to students, parents, and the community. Is that currently, have we given that availability to the community?
So the way that it's available to the students and the parents would be, the teacher would go in and there'd be a report that would be printed out. It wouldn't be an online component.
Oh, and the same, what about the community?
Same thing.
They have to go, the community has to go to the teacher?
So like for instance, the Fanta's and Penel reports, that would be a report that I could share with the community. So they can be shared, but it wouldn't be something that you would actively go on to illuminate and gather the information. Correct, correct, mm-hmm. So as a learning services team, we are really supporting and building capacity. We're working with our new teacher leaders, we're working with administrators, we're working with teacher teams. And we're really striving to create a data culture that impacts instruction, ultimately improving student learning. This is a quote that we've been sharing. Because when you talk about data, there is sometimes some anxiety and nervousness when you start talking about data with individual teachers. And we want to make sure that when we're talking about data, we're not trying to point fingers at them. We're trying to make really great decisions collectively and learn from one each, one, from one another and keep growing. I went around and I met with all of the first grade teachers in the spring. And we celebrated the student growth that they had seen with reading for their students. And at first, they were a little bit nervous. Why does someone from central office want to be part of our data meetings? What's going to happen? And by the end of the conversations and really supporting this growth of a data culture, there was a huge shift to the point where now I'm being asked, Wendy, can you come and meet with this group? Can, how, you know, how can we do more and build on this? And they felt really supported and they felt like they were learning and growing and not having fingers pointed at them. It was, it was a great experience.
Wendy, what can we do from the board's level to make sure that we build that trust level?
I think that the same thing, supporting, supporting learning services team to be able to take those actions, supporting our professional learning experiences and our time and space to promote those conversations. So assessment literacy again, huge passion of mine, uh, consists of an individual's understanding of the fundamental assessment concepts and procedures deemed likely to influence educational decisions. So we are committed as a learning services team to increasing our assessment literacy. We have a group that will be working with Oakland schools that will consist of teacher leaders in the district. And we're going to keep on learning about assessment literacy and how to support this. We're planning a book study, you can see there's a book there, Assessment Literacy for Educators in a Hurry by an amazing educator, Popem. And we're going to do a book study with our, uh, general education resource teachers. And you can see that, uh, we're also committed to sharing assessment literacy knowledge with our community. So on the left, you'll see that there is a parent guide that was created. Um, I collaborated with Oakland schools and we used the Michigan Assessment Consortium Assessment Literacy Standards, that's a mouthful, um, to guide us with this work. And trying to just make sure that people understand that there are different reasons for assessments. Every assessment has a different purpose and that it's the formative assessments. The closer the assessment gets to the daily teacher-student interaction, that's what's going to be the most powerful. That's going to have the most impact. What's really great is when we're talking about formative assessment is that we had twenty-seven educators from our district today at the FAME launch, Formative Assessment for Michigan Educators. The most well-represented of any district that was there. And it included all levels from elementary, middle school, secondary, administrators, teacher leaders, special education. And so they are basically going to be launching with learning about how to use formative assessment practices and grow these formative assessment practices. So that's very exciting. I talked to one of the, um, leaders for all of these different groups and she was very excited about the work that was done, knowing that there's a lot more work to do. But she said that in a short amount of time, she felt like there were some really big stops that they talked today. Pardon? It, it, I think it's on the website and if it's not, I'll make sure it gets there. Right now, we have it posted in the building and it's been shared with all of the administrators and they're using it, uh, primarily when they're meeting with parents and discussing assessment scores. But we'll make sure, in fact, that would be a great thing to add to the data dashboard. So I'll make sure that we get on that because we definitely want that to be very accessible and I'd rather it be too many places than not enough. I'm glad you'd like it. So those who are assessment literate know that a balanced assessment system supports the following. Different users have different assessment purposes, different assessment purposes may require different assessment methods. So as you're looking here, and we categorized it into three main types of assessments. But if you were to dig deeper, there's definitely subcategories and more. So as LST, we look at the summative data and we support the interim and the formative data. And some examples would be that, um, we met with building GERD, General Education Resource Teacher Representatives, and looked at data digging protocols to really analyze and dig into this data. Like the now what part, not just looking at the data, but what are we going to do about this data? And this was new to us to actually use protocols and dig into data. So it was a process throughout the year where we looked at some protocols, kind of tried them out, tested them out, and then made some changes and created our own modified version that we really think, um, helps us to do that now what, to really make sure that we're focusing in on instructional moves. I talked a little bit about the FAME conference today. And FAME, Formative Assessment for Michigan Educators, and it's through the Michigan Assessment Consortium. And last year, I led the teacher leaders and instructional specialists with this group. And then you can see that that's already expanding to where now we have, uh, multiple coaches that are going to be coaching their own teams. So we can, we can see that, um, it's, it's just multiplying, which is exactly what needs to take place. And I've challenged them to keep on expanding with that. So when summative assessments, we're really going to use to identify our Core One instructional needs, trends in data for the community, where to dig deeper, and comparisons. It's a little limited. Our interim data, so if you think of summative as MSEP, interim would be like NWA. It's going to measure students' learning and growth. It's going to help us to make those tier-two intervention-type decisions and really for those grade-level data dig discussions. And then our formative is really going to be what is going to steer our daily instructional moves. It's going to check for student understanding in the moment, not once a year, but daily. It's going to inform instruction and we can start to build where students start to self-assessment themselves too, which is an important life skill.
Wendy, when you say tier-two, that's on MTSS?
Correct.
And Core One, what does that mean?
Core One would be like making sure that we have a very, um, consistent and cohesive curriculum in place that is going to support the Common Core State Standards. So for instance, for math this year, we made sure that we have, um, envisioned in place in grades K through five so that everyone is doing the same program and that everyone's meeting the Common Core State Standards.
Is there a Core Two and a Core Three or?
No.
Okay. So basically it's just Core.
Core, yeah, I should probably just say Core. Um, but something to, to note is that, um, again, the formative assessment is really going to be the most powerful assessments that we can use, however, it's not used for reporting. So it doesn't have a strength in reporting, but what it has strength in are what we really want, what we all are here for, to make sure that our students succeed and that they meet every benchmark. So last year, what we did is we participated in a pilot that helped us to review our balanced assessment system. I know that I shared some of that at, um, a BIC meeting. And basically what it was is that we got together with the Michigan Department of Education, Michigan Assessment Consortium, who led it. And Novi and Dearborn were also part of this and we each brought different representatives from the district. We had the most with twenty people being represented. And it took us through a process where we really looked at our assessment system, our balanced assessment system at a whole. And with their help, with their toolkit, they were able to tell us what investments we need to make. So the toolkit identified, um, the need for investing in the formative assessment process, which is why we're using FAME to launch that work. Common assessment practices, which is why we have our teacher leaders really focusing in on common assessments as a practice. Meaning that it's not an assessment that every teacher just gives in common, but it's a practice that we intentionally choose questions to. but it's a practice that we intentionally choose questions to ask our students. We have them answer them and then we come back and we look at their answers so that we can make instructional decisions. And that's something that, again, we're growing into. It also supports our need for a coherent system and core instruction. So as we started looking at some of these investments of formative, common assessments, those types of things, we realized that we really also have to focus on that core content and instruction. That we, if that's not in place first, it's really difficult to do some of these other things. So it led us even a little bit deeper than what they told us. We explored even further. But it was a great, great opportunity to be a part of and there's still some communication. In fact, I was asked to present at the state assessment conference regarding this pilot, which I'm going to do with the other districts. And, and we'll just keep learning and growing from each other. So here, what you're seeing is possible questions asked when looking at our data. So this is what our teachers are growing into when they're doing their data digs. So the first three questions, what patterns or trends emerge? What surprises you? What catches your attention? That's the really basic information, but it's not going to be all that helpful. Is it important for us to notice? Yes, not going to be that helpful. So the other questions, what explanations do you have for what the data reveals? These types of questions are going to really help us. And they're not only going to help us with looking at our data, but they're going to help us with building our collective efficacy. Hattie's research states that collective efficacy is the number-one influence on student achievement. Number one. So we really need to be intentional about what actions are we taking to build collective efficacy. So we're really looking at the role of data as evidence to impact and build this with our educators. So you can see that one of the questions is, what good news do you have to celebrate? Because we need to make sure that we understand that we are making a difference. And we need to look at what it is that we're doing that's making a difference. This is my last slide. But we are aiming to make assessments and looking at data a habit or a process, not an event. We don't want looking at data to be me coming here to the podium in October and sharing with you. We want it to be something that our teachers feel comfortable with, that they want to ask questions, they want to keep on growing. And we know that the more effective schools typically use data differently than less effective schools. And the primary difference is the extent of data to inform instruction. So we're really trying to support the process of having a trusting environment, training for our staff, opportunities for teachers to collaborate, and a culture for data use. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want the questions now or at the very end?
Will just be a few more slides and then we'll collect all the questions you have. I bet you're thinking, what more could they possibly tell us about data? But we are looking forward to sharing just a few things about how we use this data. So we're often asked the question of after we have these, this, this, this data, we give presentations, what do we use it for? How do we go back into our work and what do we use that for? What kind of decisions does it inform? So as Wendy shared a few times, when we look at MSEP and we look at SAT data, we're looking at summative data. And that, what that data does is it gives us indicators of what areas need more attention. So it's a broad brush for us to say what might not be working, what areas do we need to dig deeper into. So specifically, in the last few years, our data has moved us into digging more deeply into programming in English Language Arts, mathematics, science, and English as a second language. We also know that our data includes gaps in student learning and our different student groups. And we'll address that in a little bit. But we want to start with talking about the Core One instructional changes. So Howard asked earlier, what is Core One? Core One is instructional changes that impact all students. So it's programming that impacts all. So when we're talking about tier-one changes, every student experiences it. So the next few slides are going to talk specifically about the Core One changes that we've made in Bloomfield Hills in response to looking at the data and the performance of our students. We also know that summative data is used at the other end. So we use it when we are identifying areas that need more attention, but then we use it again to measure how that change is working. So it gives us that summative view on both ends of the spectrum. So there's a lot of words on this slide. I'm not going to read all those words to you. This talks about and looks at the data that revealed our need for change in literacy. We've spent a lot of time over the last few years talking about that. All of the Core One changes that we'll see over the next few slides indicate and show that it is a multi-year process to be able to make these changes. It's not the flip of a switch. It's not, we're going to start a new program and the next time we assess, we're going to see these massive gains. What we know when we look at these, the data for our students is we look at cohorts. And as cohorts move through and experience a program, you expect to see continued growth throughout a cohort. So what we saw and have seen is that in MSEP and SAT data, we have seen opportunity for growth for all students. We've heard from our community and we know from comparison data that as a district, we have an opportunity to grow. So all our students can grow and be at a higher level than where they currently are. We're not just talking about closing gaps. We're not just looking at bringing up the bottom 5%. We're looking at how do we move all of our students forward and we know that we're capable of doing that. So we've seen this over the last few years as we've looked at our data. We've also made a decision as a district to invest in building capacity and making these changes. So you'll recall, we've only had about 18 months of a team. We have dedicated people focusing on these different content areas. We recognized after looking at our data and after having detailed conversations that you need a team to move this work forward. And so we made an investment in bringing forward our teacher leader in English Language Arts, as well as our instructional specialists, who have really begun methodically taking on this work. So last year, we launched our renewed focus on literacy. We performed a comprehensive needs assessment, looking at K-5 literacy across the district. One of the things that came forward that you're very well aware of is consistently inconsistent practices in instruction. And those inconsistent practices were driven by inconsistent resources and an inconsistent Core One program. So this board made the decision to move forward with adopting the Teachers College Reading and Writing Units of Study. And those have gone into implementation this year with a deep level of learning around those units. We've performed and we're about ready to launch teacher labs, where we have teachers who are embedded in professional learning in their day, going to see what other teachers are doing that are high-leverage moves that can move our students forward. So that's what's happening in K-5. In six-eight, we've had conversations about alignment and how we move forward cohesively to ensure that students aren't haphazardly receiving skills, but that they are methodically receiving skills that build upon each other. And the same thing at the high school. So they're engaging in these conversations of how do we build out to ensure that we have alignment with standards? And how do we ensure that we build out a very methodical step process for our students to receive solid instruction? We know that our data also revealed Core One instructional needs in mathematics. We spent last year talking about the pilot, the pilot program that went forward, K-5. But again, it hasn't just been one year of data that's shown us an opportunity for improvement. It's been years of data that we've seen from MSEP, SAT, formerly ACT, that has told us that we have an opportunity for all of our students to grow in mathematics. And again, we invested in bringing forward a teacher leader in mathematics who could lead this work. Harleen started a half year earlier than our other teacher leader, so she's almost two years into that role. And she is the one who kicked off that deep resource study for our K-5 team. We also heard from our staff, our teachers were calling for and asking for resources that aligned as we moved to those Common Core State Standards in mathematics. And we were able to provide that through this process. In grades six through eight, we have a common, we have a common resource that we use, our Connected Math Program, CMP3. But in that resource, we're also having deep conversations about defining learning targets that are common and creating assessments that are common so that we can have data that comes from that resource that is solid data that we can use to then measure if our instruction is working. In ninth grade this year, they're engaging in a pilot resource for Algebra I. So it hasn't just been K-5. We're looking at how we ensure that we have the resources necessary across our system for mathematics. In science, though we don't have science scores that we reported from this year, we know historically that our science scores haven't been very strong when we've looked at these standardized test results. And so we've engaged in and had conversations about how we build a cohesive set of resources for science. The state adopted the Next Generation Science Standards, the Michigan Science Standards. And the resources that we had were not yet aligned to those new standards. So we have moved in every single grade level and every single level nine through 12 on how we provide resources. Last year's launch was in six through eight with MyStar. And MyStar being a curriculum set, which we also, our student information system is also called MyStar, so there's some confusion at times. But MyStar is actually a curriculum that we're using in six through eight. We launched strategically in middle school last year because elementary was working on mathematics and literacy. This year, we're working on elementary and using the Phenomenal Science kits to be able to move forward. And at the high school, they're integrating the science standards to ensure that they're meeting the Michigan Science Stand, the Michigan Science Standards across nine through 12, which will move us forward with a different pathway for science at the high school level. So there have been a lot of intentional moves in our Core One experience for students driven by the data that we get on how our students are performing. And then the last program that I'm going to talk with you about tonight is our English as a Second Language program, not to be confused with the cohort of English Language learners. So in this slide, what we're referring to is the actual program that is provided, the resources and the opportunities for students who come to us as English Language learners. And what we've recognized through our standardized assessment results over the last few years is that we have a great opportunity to be able to move forward our English Language learners. And so we've engaged with our Title III Coordinator, Lisa Lockhart, in exploring a program review on what we offer our English Language learners. Last year, we brought in consultants from Oakland schools to begin those conversations. Last year, we also launched a successful summer program for our students in grades one through three. And this year, we're engaging in a resource review and a program review, specifically looking at the program opportunities for English as a Second Language students. So those are all examples of how summative data inform the decisions that we're making at the district level. These are Core One changes that impact all of our students. But we also know that Core One adoption, the adoption of new resources, often comes with aligned resources to support the differentiation of learning for all students. That means for students who struggle and for students who excel. When we look at our new math program and our new science program, when we look at how we're approaching our instruction for literacy, all of those components are talking about how do we take students who are struggling? So those student groups where we see gaps and how do we move them forward with new tools that are aligned to standards that we are teaching for all kids? So we are looking to move everyone forward, but also close some of those gaps. But what we don't do is we don't use MSEP and SAT data to, to identify how those programs are working to close gaps. That's when we use our interim data or our diagnostic data, so through NWEA, or our more formative data through Fontesem Penel or other forms. That's where we measure, measure students on an individual level and that takes place at the building level. And that takes place in the classroom where it should appropriately stay. And so when we talk often about the decisions that we make at a district level, we're talking about the big picture and how we use the summative data to inform the big picture. That summative data doesn't always inform the classroom experience for our teachers, which is where they rely on that more minute details to be able to move that for students. So I think this also underscores kind of that last line that's listed up there and one of our district areas of focus this year is how we unleash excellence through equity and inclusion. By adopting and improving our core instruction, we are elevating the experience for all students and in doing so, allowing for those gaps to begin to close. If we were to only target the gaps and closing the gaps, we would be missing the opportunity to move all of our students forward through these opportunities with our Core One instruction. So I'm going to bring Todd up to close it up and then open it up for questions.
So really kind of understanding and being able to analyze the nuances of teaching and learning is really a, a complex process. And as we grapple with those complexities, what's likely starting to unfold are these different systems and procedures and practices that we're trying to cultivate and foster from the district level all the way to the building level. And oftentimes, what that means is really trying to strive towards that cadence. That cadence that really suggests that a data culture is alive and thriving. But in addition to that, that means our teachers need to be supported. Teaching is an extremely difficult job and to support them, we need to resource them properly. And resources doesn't always just come in the form of that Core One, those Core One materials. Resourcing also means providing them with meaningful embedded professional development that allows them to precision their practice, to learn from each other. It means resourcing them with models of collective efficacy where they can grow and be empowered to make dynamic and nimble instructional moves based on that, that data collection or analysis or evaluation for each individual child in their classroom. Resourcing then means providing meaningful district-level professional development that's going to allow them to grow their practice and be able to understand latest research as, as education continues to evolve. So resourcing our teachers also means providing them with instructional leadership that's at a very high sophisticated level. And Rob really kind of began our presentation tonight, talking about our last instructional leadership team. And one of the reasons why I want to end there at the same place that he began was really to kind of point out that the manner in which we're going through this process is largely reliant on that consistent, sustainable infrastructure of teacher leadership that we began to build. That's our number-one strategy right now in terms of unfolding all of the capacity that is behind building this data culture and in terms of making these instructional moves, these programming changes and resourcing our teachers that are working extraordinarily hard, but making sure that they are resourced properly with all those experiences and those meaningful dialogues that take place that allows us to grow collectively, that those collective efficacy models that brings people together and really can increase the sophistication level of the programming that's wrapped around all of our children. So as an organization, as an academic organization, we are always in a state of continuous improvement in that consistent, sustainable infrastructure that Rob really began talking about through ILT. Even that model, which began or was at one point just administration, that is now an infusion of administration and some of our key teacher leaders within the district where we're able to share those practices back and forth in order to precision our own practice around instructional leadership so that we have a keen eye for what it is that we're looking for in the classroom and then we can articulate in a very meaningful feedback loop in terms of growing that practice forward and being able to support all of those nimble moves that take place within a classroom. Again, teaching and learning is a very complex nuanced profession and it takes those type of supports in terms of surrounding teachers with those meaningful opportunities to be able to really precision your practice in that manner while focusing direction and really almost bringing to, forward for the district, another level of coherence within that program. You know, really kind of following Michael Follin's lead in terms of what that looks like. So hopefully you enjoyed the presentation in terms of not only just looking at a data review, but also understanding some of those nimble moves that it's allowing us to make and as well as the infrastructure that's lying underneath that in terms of us really trying to build capacity and that cadence that includes that data outlook from a teacher's perspective at a building level that allows us to kind of grow that practice forward that's really going to inform our instruction. Want to come back up for any questions?
I suspect we have a few. So I guess it looks like Mr. Barron's got his hand raised.
I'll defer to other people for right now.
I'll ask a question. So from all the, all the data, can you, the three of you, give three specific things you've learned that we need to work on as a district from the data? And what do you, you know, what's the vision in terms of implementation? Like as one example, I was looking at the SAT data. Seems to be, and I don't want you to go back to the slide, I remember this from BIC, seems to be a downward trend in math. So is there, is there a problem with starting in eighth grade? I know this has been a concern of members of our community that people have to test out to start the whole Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, Precalc, Calculus track. Is there any thought to having people the ability to opt in as opposed to being able to test in? And then what are, what are two other specific things you've learned from this data?
So looking at this data, we really aren't surprised in terms of like new understandings. What this data-
What this data is really kind of presenting to us is that the moves that we started to make really are in alignment with this. So a lot of the data is predictable for us in terms of what we were expecting. So the students that took the SAT this year actually outperformed how they did on the PSAT. So you are right, when you're looking at one cohort in comparison to another cohort, a different group of students did perform differently than the other group of students. But when you compare that group of students on how they performed on the practice SAT, they actually did make improvements from the time that they took that test. So you can see up here on the slide in terms of what we would predict kind of going forward for the SAT, the group behind it is likely going to score better than this year because they performed better on the PSA Math 10 than did the cohort that was right in front of them. And then the cohort in ninth grade is showing that they are outperforming the group that's in front of them. So as those cohorts are lined up, again, that's comparing different groups of kids to different groups. So oftentimes, what we try to do is try to encapsulate, you know, more round out a group of students so that we're not comparing completely different groups of kids to another group of kids. So we are looking at the likelihood of SAT ticking up for us for the next couple of years based on what we're seeing in 10th and 9th grade performances. But in terms of like what do we need to work on right now, we definitely need to continue down the road of reducing variability around our Core One instruction and bringing in those type of items that I mentioned as a conclusion in terms of how we're going to resource our teachers. And in particular, with those embedded professional development models that's going to include lab classroom experiences where teachers can come together and see practices taking place live in a classroom and then be able to debrief that in terms of how would we adjust our instruction as we bring those models in, in tighter alignment with what latest research is telling us in terms of growing out those particular disciplined areas? Does that help a little bit, or?
I think I can give another example, Paul. You know, you asked about something that we've learned, and I think one thing that sticks out, and Wendy talked about it when she showed the slide of performance of our students, our English language learners as a cohort showed great growth when we looked at English, their performance on ELA. But they showed growth, but they were in alignment with the county achievement in mathematics. And so one of the conversations we've been having with our English as a Second Language Program is how do we support mathematics and what does that look like, especially as we are moving into a math program that is very language-rich and relies heavily on vocabulary that might not be familiar to our English, as English language learners. So Lisa Lockhart and I have started connecting and talking with our ESL teachers on how do we support math? What does that look like? What are approaches to doing so, especially as we move into a new math program, K5? So that would be an example of something that's there that resonated with us that we're going to be looking at how we address in order to provide stronger support.
And for the math question that I have, are we going to take a look at whether or not families can opt in and go through the path of algebra, geometry? Is that something that, as opposed to being tested out? I know that's something we changed three years ago, and that's a concern of the community. People want to be able to opt in to algebra, geometry, algebra II, pre-cal.
I think that's a great conversation, and I think our math placement conversation is a much larger one, which I think we'd be happy to engage in. It's not easy to answer with just a yes or no.
Howard?
Where do I begin? Some kind of easy ones and some a little bit more difficult. Early on, we talked about the PSAT. It's a paper and pencil test. So are we saying that's not computer adaptive? We're taking a step, is the state taking a step backwards in terms of the usefulness of the data?
I don't know if it's necessarily a step backwards.
I mean, we've just moved from paper and pencil off of that to computer adaptive, which is a lot more robust data. Why in the world is the state going back and going back to paper and pencil, which is?
So one thing that's really good about the M-Step being computer adaptive is that we don't get the item analysis that we would want to get. So why would we want students to go through every single question if they, if we can already show that they don't know how to answer it or know how to answer it? So it kind of shortens the length of the test because it doesn't give us that item analysis. The PSAT is going to give us the opportunity for that item analysis. So it's not really a step backwards.
When I say step back, I mean we're going back to a manual, fill in a bubble, you know, static tests instead of dynamic.
Right. And there, and there is talk that it may be on a computer at some point.
Is PSAT just whichever the group is that does it, I think in New Jersey or whatever? Is that not, they just don't have available a computer adaptive test yet?
That is correct. But we wouldn't necessarily want it to be computer adaptive either because when we're looking at PSAT and SAT, those are very high-stake assessments that students use for college readiness. And the rich data that we get from those tests, we wouldn't want to compromise.
On that graph there, you've got the little arrows that you inserted. Is it possible in the future, instead of showing us kind of the traditional way of laying this out by individual grade, flipping it around so it actually looks at cohorts so we don't have to worry about flipping arrows around, but we really can see the trends on, you know, grade going to next grade going to, so looking at longitudinal data?
Looking at the buyers right next to each other?
Yeah. All right, let's see, number three. I think on economically, on math, looking at economically disadvantaged, it went from thirty-nine, thirty-one percent to thirty-nine percent. So we had an impressive improvement in economically disadvantaged in math. I think it's three through eight. Do we have any idea why that is? That's wonderful.
We could hypothesize, but I don't think we have a specific answer as to why.
So we didn't actually take a action to make that happen? It sort of occurred?
I think that what we know is that we know that we have teachers who are working toward alignment and resources. So we had teachers who were piloting a variety of different programs last year. So we could hypothetically make some, you know, but we don't have a specific causality. There was nothing in place firmly last year that necessarily changed the experience.
Well, it's not just last year, it was, there was a trend over four years, it went from thirty-one percent to thirty-three to thirty-five to seven to nine or something like that.
Can I add on to that question before you go to the next? Is economically disadvantaged equivalent to free and reduced lunch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sometimes also, when you pay attention, when, I mean, you listed four different areas that you're focusing on, right? So that was the literacy, the math, and what was the other one? And then the English.
English as a second language.
Oh, there's only three?
And science.
Science, sorry.
And data culture.
Yeah. So sometimes focusing on something makes it, makes things go up.
As we read.
If they know you're going to test them, then they, they start to pay attention, yeah.
And the advantage of focusing on our Core One is, and as we reduce variability and as we get better alignment to standards, as we resource teachers differently, our students that are most vulnerable wrapped around that program will oftentimes show some of the greater gains within that as we tighten up some of those pieces. So all students benefit from that, as Christine suggested. So we're really taking, it's really an approach that's focusing on the student that's excelling to the student that's struggling, but the most vulnerable students that would be interacting with that degree of variability, they have a less of a tendency to be able to fall out because we have a systematic way of structuring those interventions and making sure that we have a consistent vocabulary around, consistent vocabulary and understanding of teaching and learning for a particular discipline.
Okay. Let me add one more and then I'll pass it on so I can do another round. Special education, which group is responsible for that? Is that special education group or the gen ed group? Because you've got, I don't know if it's a right term, mainstream.
Both.
But, so really, special education is a shared responsibility between the two organizations?
Yep.
Okay. I'll let someone go on.
They are general education students first.
Okay, thank you.
If you have more questions, keep going.
Sure, okay.
Can you go to the slide, SAT scores by groups?
For ELA, for math?
That one. The Asian population is crushing it. Have we taken a look at what they're doing? Is it a cultural phenomenon? Is it something that we can?
We would just be speculating, but those results are consistent in most districts.
Okay, I repeat my question. Have we taken a look at what they're doing and is there something that we can glean from what's happening in that community that, where we can bring, help bring other populations up?
We started that conversation in BIC recently.
Yeah, we touched on it a little bit in BIC, and it was part of a great research study in terms of closing the Achievement Gap Institute at Harvard with Dr. Ron Ferguson, where we went over the different cultural components in terms of parenting and the type of parenting that often is contributed or related to the highest achievement scores. So we do have that information in terms of the research that's been conducted that lends itself to a culture or climate that would, that would position students to be able to form better on standardized achievement scores. So that's a report we would be able to put out. I could put in the next weekly report, weekly board update in terms of if you wanted to go through that information. But there is speculation around why that, why the data that you're looking at right there tends to be consistent across the county or state level.
National, even.
National.
It's a national.
Right.
But then think about, okay, so we get this culture is different than this culture. How would a school, you know, like besides just putting out information, they're not going to be able to say, oh, why don't you change your family structure? You know, that's, you know what I mean, like that? Think about where you're going with that. It's like, can a public school really do that? You can give out information, but you can't really, it's not a public school to go in and change someone's family.
But is there something that we, that as a public school, we can glean from that culture that we can implement, maybe is my question?
Yeah.
But we do have that responsibility. We're here to educate, number one, all students. Whatever, whether they're high achieving students coming from Asian culture or low achieving students coming from African-American or economically disadvantaged, we have to be responsible for all students. Number one.
Yeah, but we don't tell a family how it acts.
And number two.
We can share information. We can share information about how different cultures do things, but our teachers can't go in and tell a family, you know, they can share things, right?
But we do, but I was going to.
It's also not too.
But let me finish, please. I was in the middle of a comment. There are wraparound services. There are things we can do as a school district, other school districts do, which works with the family to help families learn how to parent, learn how to adjust for issues that they might be having at home such that when they come to school, they can, you know, take some of the lessons learned from the Asian community or the white community and use some of those lessons learned to try to improve the other achievements that are substandard.
What we try to do is not overemphasize standardized achievement results because it's all, it's often not correlated to a child's future success. There are other things that are a better correlation in terms of what their future success would be. So it's important to look at these as one singular measure. Now, we do try to use that information the best we can to help us take a look at a systems approach in terms of that, but we try to stay away of making judgments on one culture versus another culture. But there is research that would, that would support that there are different types of parenting approaches that are really universal, no matter what the family or income level is. But usually, the most predictable statistic in terms of looking at student achievement is usually economic status. So as we look at that, and especially if you look at that across the county level, you can see that, you know, the, the district with the highest free and reduced lunch count is, is the worst performer on the standardized achievement result. So that actually is a universal in terms of like the greatest predictor in terms of what your results would be on an SAT. So, so that isn't necessarily a nuance that we're trying to get into to speculate why one culture is doing better than the other, but rather, what are we doing to really kind of move all of our students forward without trying to enter into that, that area of judgment or, you know, because there are a lot of, there are a lot of things that, that surround and impact a student's achievement. And we want to be making sure that we're attending to those in the classroom, that we're making those instructional moves that's going to advance all of our learners.
But we have to look at, we can't be fatalistic and say, well, that's just the way it is because of their family structure.
Howard, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. One of the.
I think that's not appropriate.
It was totally appropriate. Totally appropriate.
Hold on.
Good lord. Anyway, one of the things related to that is you concentrate on the core level, which is tier one. We also need to be talking about tier two, which is really what the, the lessons learned that we've had at the remedial, whether it's GERT or reading recovery or all the other supplemental programs we have, because the Core One is going to, exactly, it's going to lift all boats. That's wonderful. We need to do that, looking at Troy or some of those other districts. But we also have to talk about tier two, which is exactly to what Jackie was talking about, which is looking at those subgroups and saying, why is it that economically disadvantaged and African-American are still thirty to forty percent below? And what are we doing to work on those supplemental programs, those remedial programs, and also the enrichment programs for the, for the gifted child so that we really can have that differentiated instruction? So we can see not only all boats rising, but we can also start to see these gaps shrinking.
Right, and we agree with that sentiment. And I think that one of the key components to remember is that as we, the best systems that work are aligned systems. And so the work that we're doing to build cohesion amongst our Core One opportunities for students allows us as a system to better support our tier two and tier three. Because as a system, when we have three different resources or four different resources to support learning, it's very difficult for a system to support it in four or five different ways. So for us to understand what that looks like is very important. So step one is really looking at the alignment of Core One. And with that often comes and has come in almost all of the program and decisions we've made, materials to support tier two and tier three that align directly to those programs and then to move forward with enrichment as well. So it provides us with.
So is it purely like a timing thing that because we really haven't looked at this data before, as Wendy's been saying, we're concentrating on tier one right now, on Core One, because we just have so much bandwidth? But that we're moving over the next year or two into focusing more on the tier two?
So I think it's important to state, we have looked at this data for years. This is not the first time we've looked at M-Step data or SAT data or SAT data to make informed instructions, decisions about instruction. What we've done in the last two years is built capacity to move more quickly around making decisions for Core One instruction. And we've done that in some core areas. So from that, we are also learning and simultaneously building support in tier two and tier three. So we have people whose jobs it is to really focus on tier two and tier three support. They are a part of that professional learning that's happening around these new programs.
Because we didn't see.
They're embedded into that support.
Any tier two information. It was all, the slides you presented was all tier one.
And I think that's a good point is, and that's what I would caution to because there is, there is a lot of work that you could be invited into, and I would caution of making assumptions that something isn't being worked on or not in place because it wasn't in a presentation. And you're familiar with some of those tier twos that are in place, like reading recovery, math recovery, GERT teachers. We have interventionists in place. We have credit recovery programs. A lot of those components are embedded within the system, maybe not necessarily presented here today with special education or how that's nuanced or layered into around that core instructional program. But rather, because we are looking at high-level data today that encompasses all students, we also wanted to make sure that we are talking about the programs that also in front, that are in front of all of those students. But that is something that we would be able to break out in particular in terms of like what that tier two or tier three or multiple-tiered systems of support would look like. But because it isn't necessarily part of a presentation, I would caution of making the assumption that, that isn't necessary.
Also, Howard, I think we need to be reminded that we are in a continuing evolution from being very unique site-based in our buildings to much more systemic. to, um, much more systemic approach to these. And that's part of what this data, um, is really telling us is that we are moving from very independent buildings sort of doing things, um, not incorrectly, but just not in the same way. And so, now we're looking at being more consistent from site to site so that we are sure that when we develop the professional development to offer to our staff, that everybody's getting the same kind of information so we can help raise all boats.
Some, some additional questions. Um, we've got internal data for reading or, uh, ELA. Do we have any internal data for science or social studies? Or do we have to rely on the M-Step? Do you want to restate kind of what?
So, for science and social studies, because we can't really rely on the M-Step, we're developing common assessments. And so, our teacher leaders are working with grade level teams to develop common assessments so that they can look at that data and make instructional moves. We don't want to wait for the state to be done with their field test. And we don't want to rely on social studies where it's only given to two different grades. So, um, they're taking really big steps and doing some phenomenal work right now to build the process of using common assessments.
This is a look at district data that's available to us. But of course, you know, uh, having experienced a classroom yourself, you know that assessment is a normal part of every single classroom. So, whether it's a performance in band or it's a quiz in the social studies class or a test or an assessment, all right, all of the, or a project that a student is working on, those assessments are available. And that's actually, um, why we really wanted to focus on that data culture because we want to be able to cultivate that data culture and that cadence right at the teacher level. Because that right there at the building level with the teacher engaging with other teachers around the commonalities of that particular discipline is where we are the most nimble to be able to make an instructional move or to be able to adapt or make a change or be able to group or reteach or put in some type of intervention. So, the data that we're looking at today isn't at that ground level, but it doesn't mean that those practices don't exist. Again, it just means that's not part of this presentation as we're really looking at high level data. But of course, assessments are available and part of every, um, uh, course that you would take, every subject area that you're participating in, um, even if it's, you know, whether it's a music class or a world language or math or part of the core, all of those components are, are in place.
Another thing, um, one of the things that Tina does is she sets up, works with us and sets a budget, a prediction as to where we're going to be over the next twelve, three, two, three years. And then we have accounting information that comes in and says, how do we do against that budget? One thing to consider in the future is, um, using the actions you guys are taking over the next year, two, three to be able to predict where we think the actions that we're taking today will put the data coming into the future. And that way, we can sort of set, uh, a goal for ourselves in terms of based on these actions. Here's where we think we might be over the next twelve, twenty-four months. And then we use the data coming from M-Step, NWA, FONCE, SPENNELL, wherever, to see whether we are hitting those kind of levels that we had expected based upon the actions that we're taking. Has that been thought about?
I think what's important to remember is that we have different cohorts of students and we have no control over what's included in the test when it comes to those students.
Number one, FONCE and SPENNELL and the NWA is internal. And second of all, looking at the cohorts, we can track them, as I said earlier, in looking at longitudinal instead of year by year. So, I, I.
I think it's a suggestion we can consider.
Yeah. And I, and I would even go to, uh, um, in response to that too, I would also kind of, um, remind ourselves in terms of like the school improvement process or the district improvement process. So, a lot of those goals are spelled out. And in particular, you can look at each school improvement, uh, plan that's out there in terms of like the specific targets that they're trying to hit and achievement that they're trying to make. But again, because we didn't necessarily go through all of the school improvement process plans or all those goals, you know, we don't, it doesn't mean that that process doesn't exist. It just means that it exists at the building level and that process is actually very healthy and thriving. Um, and that would be something that we could invite you into to be able to observe if you wanted to learn more about that. But I would just really kind of caution in terms of like because it wasn't necessarily here. And you're right, we're, we're not, um, you know, we're not, we don't quite operate the same as Tina and the business office because, you know, the, the business that we're in really is a human business and we're dealing with children. And so, we really have to take a look at the nuances in terms of like what those instructional practices would look like. And we then, we support our teachers at the building site to be able to really kind of help them advance their work and empower them to make a lot of those decisions. So, targets are set, targets are achieved. Even while state assessments like this are a moving target for us, it's in fact that assessment has not been the same, um, ever. Uh, so, it's difficult in order to say like we're going to hit this target because that test two years from now, it, for the type of assessment data that we are looking at here. So, where we try to empower teachers differently is more something that we have more control over in terms of like a local assessment or a common assessment. And building those type of consistencies where they would be able to understand their own discipline in a new way in terms of what it is that they're really trying, trying to achieve. And also putting value on the type of thinking that we want to be present. So, the type of thinking that we might value most at a community level may not necessarily sit within the M-Step. So, an over-focus on the M-Step may not necessarily produce the type of thinking that we want to be able to promote the, the most. But in response to that question, I just wanted to point out that yes, those processes are in place. It just wasn't necessarily a focus of this presentation tonight.
And that, and that's why, um, I was asking earlier about the trust. And being able to trust us as a board and trust the community to be able to have some of those conversations and be able to communicate that so we have a team effort, um, on this whole process and not just totally within the, the organization itself. Trust is incredibly important.
I have a, I have a question. Um, I know because we get the data now because this data switched to the SAT. Is there any way to get the data with still an ACT culture? Meaning that I know a lot of the students in the high school use the ACT as opposed to the SAT in terms of what they send off to colleges. Is there any way for us to get similar data for ACT?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and it's actually on the BHHS website, the ACT data. You just have to keep in mind that not all students are taking it and it's not part of our accountability. So, the data here is all students. Um, the ACT data could be one student taking it ten times and another student not taking it at all. So, we just have to be a little bit careful. But, um, I know that I just sat this week actually with Charlie because he was able to get, um, the data for the last few years. And he actually, um, noticed that there's a shift in the right direction with ACT. And, um, and then we looked at the fact that, well, maybe that's because now it's just a select group of students taking it. However, um, looking at it compared to last year's, we're also seeing a trend in an upward direction.
So, do we have, so are you able to put together a graph similar as best you can with whatever from an ACT point of view?
I don't know if we can show it with all these, um, student groups.
No.
Or just in, I mean, whatever you have. I, I just, I still think, and I think Charlie may, may agree that ACT is still the default, um, test that students use in the high school for what they send off to colleges at this point.
Sure, it's just not an apples-to-apples comparison, right? Because you only have students who would self-select and pay for and use, take it because they're going to use it. So, our students who may not, whereas the ACT encompasses all eleventh, or I'm sorry, the SAT encompasses all eleventh graders. So, there would be a, a difference in the student group who's taking those. So, test scores, I think it's a great data point to look at, absolutely, and we can get that. But they're not, uh, apples-to-apples comparison of the student group who's taking those.
But Charlie does share that on the website.
So, a, a comment, I guess, more than a question. So, to me, when I look at this data on, uh, M-Step, um, especially, you know, when I'm looking, when I look at eighth grade, I, I sort of see that as sort of summative in the, so what have kids accumulated by the time they finish middle school? And so, to me, I, I look at the variability as they build along and obviously we look at where things need to continue to have some focus. But to me, um, I'm looking more specifically at eighth grade as being, uh, it's a growth process. Kids mature at their own rate through that, through those years. And how well are they ready to go into the high school? So, to me, when I see, um, the ELA scores for eighth grade being at the top, to me, that's telling us that we've gotten the foundation for those kids in a, in a, in a good place. So, to me, that's how I look at that. So, I'm looking at the variability along the way, but knowing that kids all grow at their own rate. Hopefully, by the time they're finishing middle school, they're in a, in a good place to move on into the high school. Other questions? Comments?
Great presentation.
Yeah.
It's a great, I know this was a lot of work. I really appreciate the, the deep dive you provided here.
And truthfully, I, I appreciate that. It was, um, quite a bit to put together. But really, the people who have been working hard are in the classroom. And the amount of work that they've been doing in terms of really precision our practice and look for those areas to really support our students are really our teachers. So, we're trying to do our best to be able to support the teachers in terms of really those things I mentioned in terms of resourcing them, not only with materials but meaningful dialogue, um, uh, resourcing them with data protocols, resourcing them with, uh, increasing levels of sophistication of instructional leadership, resourcing them with teacher leaders, resourcing them with, uh, embedded professional development because they're in front of our kids every day. They're working extremely hard. And we want to be able to support them. And the amount of effort that they're putting into this in terms of really kind of analyzing and understanding their instructional data and the moves that they're making, the type of supports that they're putting around students, whether it's a tier one classroom support that happens right inside the classroom or tier two of a combination that could be in the classroom or be a pull-out or in tier three, all of those teachers are really working extraordinarily hard. And by reducing this variability, it's allowing us to be more systematic in terms of the type of supports that we're, uh, wrapping our teachers around. So that they are able to make targets right at that classroom and grade configuration and empower them to adapt those practices, not from a very high level, but rather where teaching and learning happens is really at a grade span or in a particular subject discipline and empowering them with those maneuvers to be able to take a look at all those nuances, to be able to analyze, be able to evaluate, to be able to make those adjustments right at the ground level while we're giving them all the supports they need to be able to grow those practices forward.
Yeah, what stood out to me too is eight hundred reports, eight hundred individualized reports. That really, custom reports, that really is amazing that, um, and really it's such a short amount of time since we've been working on the core one, um, changes, right? And the data enrichment, eight hundred.
The amount of work that went behind.
Nine hundred, sorry. Nine hundred custom reports. That's, that's a lot of engagement there, yeah.
So, we have the easy job of putting that data together in a graph. But for our teachers to be able to conduct, um, those, that amount of quality assessments, um, the amount of effort and, um, precision that it took to give the FONCE and, uh, PENNELL with fidelity to be able to really understand where a student's reading level is, that's an enormous amount of work. And, um, they really deserve a lot of congratulations in terms of, of, of the trajectory where we have been and where we continue to grow, so.
And so, in our math, our math curriculum, the, uh, math system that we just, uh, moved into, so that would be the similar thing. So, there would be the building blocks in order to build algebraic thinking, right? And then they're assessing which other blocks each student has, to what level, and which ones they need to work on. So, then they can target and customize it for their student, each individual student, right?
And absolutely.
So, similar to FONCE and PENNELL for, um, language, yeah.
What you just described, we significantly increased our capacity to be able to do that because we have, um, reduced the burden of our teachers to be writing curriculum and to be looking and scavenging for resources. So, we've been able to provide them with a very comprehensive math program that is, that spirals in a very sophisticated manner, that has a very rich assessment platform that came along with it. It even has intervention components with it. So, what we've done is we've been able to, uh, reduce that burden significantly in terms of designing that curriculum to really do what you just outlined, which is spending their time in terms of analyzing how students are responding to that instruction so that they can design the instructional practices that would leverage more readily of what that student experience is. So, that's really the dynamic that we're trying to pull apart in terms of shifting that conversation. And without that focus, um, what you just described would have been even more difficult to do right now.
Yeah, I can see that. It would be really helpful. And then do you also then take, as these, as these faculty are doing these nine hundred custom reports, right? Is there then also another layer where they might see like, I'm really comfortable with these building blocks and I can see how I can move my, personally, I'm able to help move these students over. But these two building blocks here of algebraic thinking, I'm not as comfortable. So, is there some type of PD or, um?
That's really kind of similar to what.
Immediate things that they can do to improve their own skills? Because they're self-assessing too, I would imagine.
That's similar to what Wendy described in terms of like what she's trying to coach at the building levels, the ability and the protocols that you would engage in that type of discourse around teaching and learning. So, that you can bring in the commonalities. And really kind of what you're describing and what you're entering into is really a definition around collective efficacy and those models that really promote and are the, are, um, or is, um, based on research, um, the most impactful on student learning. So, what you're describing kind of moves us further into collective efficacy models and our ability to do that. And that's what Wendy kind of described in terms of what her primary focus is right now in order to be landing right at that building site, at that classroom or grade level configuration and then coaching that practice.
Awesome.
I know I asked a lot of wondering questions and I really appreciate all the, the work you guys have been doing, both at the LST level and at the building level. This is a journey. We've just taken the first few steps. We're doing things that are similar to what every school district in the country is doing. And you guys are leading the charge and I really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Got it? Thank you. It's a terrific report. Um, do you want to say anything more about strategic planning?
I think I said most of what I needed to say in the beginning.
I think so too. So, I do have one card here for public comment. Len Dillon?
I'm Len Dillon. I'm a 4057 Gibber. I'm in the district. I've spoken here before. And I brought the newspaper that was delivered to the house today. Good news, bad news, right? Congratulations, the Bloomfield Boys Tennis Team. They made history last, over the weekend. They had eight for eight and seven out of eight won. Never been done before. And this is the problem that I had when my daughter went to school here. It's the Birmingham Bloomfield Eagle. We got a picture of a different school kid, private school kid in town. And we get the low, the last paragraph with a small announcement. I just want to bring it to your attention because I, when my daughter went to school here, I really thought the Bloomfield athletes did not get a fair shake in the paper, in most of the papers. And if I don't say anything, nobody's going to do anything. And I would be nice to see a, uh, public effort in, in communicating with these people that, that write this and that own this, that, uh, we spend our money too. Because this, it's embarrassing. And if it was my kid that was on the, the Bloomfield Blackhawks team, I'd be really upset. So, that's, that's it. As it relates to everything that was said tonight, okay, um, I think there's just one little thing missing. And I don't know if you grew up here, but, but I did. And if you were to go to dinner, lunch, breakfast, anywhere, and you were to talk about Bloomfield Hills School District, you know what they'd say? Best in class. Unmatched, uncomparable. Best in class, just incredible. That's what they would say. And that's not what we were compared to. So, I'm in the real estate business and I know there are special assets. And I've got a ninety billion, ninety million dollar budget here. And I'm trying to think of a, of an asset class that's unmatched in the marketplace and it's the Townsend Hotel. The average daily rate and the day, average daily occupancy there cannot be matched by any hotel in Michigan. But it's here. And it's got a budget probably, you know, it's, it's. But it's here. And it's got a budget probably, you know, it's, it's, and it produces a service that's unmatched in the marketplace. So if you were to go and put leverage on that, you would go and compare that against common asset. Common asset would be in Lake Forest, Winnetka, Dublin, Ohio, Indianapolis. It would not be anywhere in the state of Michigan. It would not be in the county. And we've compared Bloomfield Hills School, and by the way, the most valuable assets in my world are my children. They go to school at Bloomfield Hills. And I'm looking at you comparing this jewel to everybody else. And that's not the competitive set. The competitive set for Bloomfield Hills Schools is best in class, not anybody else. And I don't know where they all are because I'm not in your business, but I'll tell you what. You compare me to Oakland County schools, we got a problem. You compare me to the state of Michigan? We, I know we did, we compared a single campus, freshman campus to Nutria High School in Winnetka. We use them. Why are we not using them here? Because you know what? The survey says, we compare ourselves to all of those. Look what the survey said. The survey was wonderful. It was glowing. Well, it should be because those numbers say we are great. The reality of it is, we may be good, but there's room to get better. These are our kids, for God's sakes. What all this gobbledygook is about comparing ourselves to how we're doing is one thing. But compare ourselves to the best. I'm a businessman and I think you guys are too. If I'm building Cadillacs and I'm going to compare myself to Yugo's and Kia's, I got a problem. I'm out of business in three years. I compare myself to a Lexus, a BMW and a Porsche, competitive set, kind of drawing the picture. That's what we have to talk about here. This thing's off-base. We are not comparing ourselves to that, to that food group. And I want you to adjust the angle to this ship and get it on base where we're all on the same page. Because you know what? This is my, the most valuable assets in my world are my children. And the most valuable thing I can do for them is give them an education. And this is not something I'm going to guess with. I've told you three or four months ago, I'm doing due diligence on where my kids are going to go to high school. And this is a problem. I heard a lot of wonderful things. But I'll tell you what, until the colleges and the universities of America tell us we don't need standardized test scores, I'm with you. I'm all in. But they do. And I happen to have two boys that need to get into a university. And I'm counting on you guys to prepare them for that test. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so then we will move on into board business. We have one item. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board accept the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2017-18 as audited and presented by Plant Moran.
Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Bank, discussion of the motion. Many thanks again to Plant Moran for all the work that they've done with our, and all of our staff in the finance department. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any closing comment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you very much.